... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 All right. Motion to approve the agenda. Any change in someone else?
Motion to approve.
One favor.
Aye.
All opposed? You're gonna have any cards for audience to listeners, but... All right, now we invite the public to give testimony to the budget. The public here. Hearing no comment, we will have more on that in the Treasurers Report.
All right. I did put some things at your desk or your pink box there. The first one we'll go over is the bigger one, the estimated fund balances for FY 2016. I gave Kelly the forms of the official state reports for you to sign. I'm just gonna have Mike every sign in first page because I haven't put the report together. We're still having a little issue with SUNAR, which I was trying to throw up with them. And plus, still not having balanced all of FY 2014. I don't have the exact fund balances and all have to go on this form. This form does not do until October 15th in the State Department of Education. So hopefully I'll have that all done by then and I'll get it down by that time. But I would, since we are not gathering before that, I would ask that you sign that because it's been reflected about the same as you see here in front of you. And the next thing on here is on the front page, you'll see that we are going to, in operating expenses, we're gonna have a $649,213 surplus and an overall surplus with restricted funds of $1,118,239. It's on the right-hand side of the page near the bottom. And just a reminder that we will be getting audited on our state aid for 2014, our private facility personnel transportation, and all of our title grants and federal grants for 2015 coming up here shortly with my state. And also on the budget from last year, what I could see is that you guys received the $12 million and then you got a second payment of like 12, $1.2 million. And that one was put into the capital projects fund as long as, same as sales tax was. So those payments were not commingled together and I don't know if you guys knew about that or what, but those were, those funds were not commingled. And there is a plan, you know, I have a plan for the project, capital project development money of the 12 million to be paid for the next 10 years for a total amount of $12,492,473 for the bond payments. And so this year, this $350,000 is going to go towards that. So I will be transferring out of the capital development fund $350,000 and bring that towards the bond and interest to make that payment when it comes due. And the interest will be keeping in the O&amp;M funds and not using any of those interest terms on those monies as well. The second after the first, anybody have any questions about the first page or the budget in general?
Is this a Treasurers Report or are we in the budget?
Yes.
Oh, I was going over the budget.
I think we'll save that till when we get down for the unfinished business.
Oh, why?
Where we re-review the amendments, the summary page down in unfinished business approval of the 2015-16 budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, this should be just Treasurers Report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I will lose, not do that, and we go on to the Treasurers Report. The Treasurers Report, I gave you guys a copy of July 2014. That's how eventually each one of the Treasurers Reports will look like. And what I do is I break them down by fund. And so each one from me, you'll be getting, when I have all these done, you'll be getting all of these and the pages after that will be each fund and how they're broken down. And I do have the PMA all completely balanced and that is also set at your place at the touch for PMA. So those are all up to balance through to August 2015. So in each one of the sheets behind that are the interest that always earned throughout the, since July 2014 are referenced on now in all the revenues and expenses. That's all I have in Treasurers Report.
You want a super-done report? Sure. Got a few announcements here. First off, your compensation report, compensation report was in your packet and we will be posting that online. Also too, I want to thank the Prairie Grange for the last decade, actually over the last decade, they've been providing dictionaries to our third graders and they did so again this year. We're very appreciative of their generous gifts to our third grade kids. It's homecoming week at the high school, which means Jake's very, very busy. All week long, we've had theme activities for our students. Thursday, we had the parade, 4:30, it starts in Capron, it's coming to Poplar Grove after that. Friday's the homecoming game and Saturday's the dance. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Heber?
No. No.
No, okay. October 9th, we have our first Teachers Institute. We have several different sessions, some special ed trainings, we have motivating the students, appropriate uses of social media. We have Brian Schwartz from IPA coming to talk to our staff about that. October 7th, we have a board facilities meeting at 4:30 right here. October 9th is our new administrators greeting football game tentative calendar date. I just kinda wanted to come back and make sure the board still wanted to move forward with that. We would be at the football game, like I said, October 9th. It would be myself and our new administrators, kind of a meet and greet, welcome there. And I guess we've got cupcakes and ice cream that'll be available to our parents, students and staff that night. So if the board is still okay with that, we'll move forward with that. And then the last thing I got, we've got October 15th, parent conferences are coming up from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's hard to believe we're sitting here, October, parent conferences already, but things are moving right along. So that's my report. Moving on, committee reports. Mike, anything on the policy?
Didn't have any, the next meeting would be determined.
Don, we do have two more policy came in, so you and I should probably sit down and set a date for policy committee.
It's fine.
Business services. We met last Thursday, I think it was. We went over the proposed budget as well as some other things. One of the things we discussed was setting a guideline, not a hard rule, on keeping a minimum of three to six months in reserves in our funds, trying to adhere to that. We didn't want to, didn't feel like we wanted to set policy on that, but it's something we wanted to bring up for discussion at some point. We don't have a, currently have a next meeting coming, but it'll be Friday, let me see, end of October or something like that, I think we thought. So anything else I missed, Ed, that we?
We talked a little bit about the process of how the budget was developed, how Julia filled us in on how, why, how and why we might have to amend a budget, specifically this one. She's not really got, really confident in some of the history, the financial, especially the expense history of this district. So she's gonna need to perhaps amend the budget as we go through something that, as she mentioned, she doesn't like to do, but certainly this year she might have to. She still had some expenses and stuff running in that she wasn't worried when she got here. So certainly there, there might be some red herrings out there that she might have to deal with moving forward.
Good, that's it. So as on turn, the one man's plan?
We met, like Mike said, we're gonna meet again on October 7th. Last meeting, Allison Lewis gave a PowerPoint on some of the problems at Capron. It's quite eye-opening. So that's one of our buildings that's gonna get addressed. We're hopefully gonna move forward and bring all the principles to their own meeting so they can address their own building and have a best interest in their building, hopefully get some stuff accomplished.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I was gonna ask Tom, when he has this meeting, if I'm not able to attend. Tom, would you, at the last meeting that you guys had, Allison pointed out some sort of high need and maybe expensive fixes and then a number of very small fixes and there was kind of discussion about how quickly those should be moving forward and whether we'd be able to move forward with those. I'm hoping there'll be some kind of report from Jim that at least some of those easy fixes were taken care of that Allison mentioned.
Yeah, I think that a few of us were surprised that there wasn't a little money spent already to get things rolling, but I will, I will make sure that happens.
Okay. Thank you. The Curriculum Committee met again for the second time with the new group and had a very lengthy, couple hours long discussion about, again, the state of curriculum and curriculum alignment. And there's a great need. This is the sort of thing that happens, gets created, gets turned into a visual, gets filed somewhere sounding like it, which sounds very familiar with curriculum and development and sometimes how these things go. So there were, there was a lot of talk about how the LA has done a good job of standardizing their curriculum and aligning their curriculum and maybe they might represent a model. They've had some, a speaker, would you call it a speaker, presenter, Mike, come in and sort of?
Facilitator.
Facilitator, help them with that process. And so there's a bit of discussion about maybe the need for more, more programming and more facilitators and what should maybe be part of a staff development day or institute day or whatever the terminology, there was, not sure, institute day, I think. And I think as, as we move forward, it seems to me that the, what the board might be most interested in, as we move forward with strategic planning is maybe doing what we can to make sure that the faculty and the admin have that support from us, the time release, the coordination, whatever they need to get that curriculum aligned so that we can kind of create a strategic plan that fits with the curriculum or helps the curriculum along, the development of that curriculum along. Because of course, curriculum alignment, I feel, should be a pretty high priority for Brad Breakfield, right? Did I get the name right this time?
Yes.
Brad Breakfield has also done, done some work with that and was very familiar at Poplar Grove. So Poplar Grove has attempted to put their curriculum in order and create a, do some alignment with that. So it seems like they might be also a model that might be looked to possibly. As far as assessment, because curriculum assessment was also discussed, that ECR is a group that's gonna be brought in to kind of look at how much testing we do and what, which of the testing is doing the most good for us. So we'll leave that to our admin to pull that together. And Communications Committee, we're not sure how to move forward with the Communications Committee, but it still seems like that might be a need to figure out how we're getting information out and how that ties in with the website and whether communication really falls into curriculum or not. And then lastly, a report card committee. They began some discussion about standards-based report cards, discuss the confusion that comes with standard-based report cards and the idea that that's nothing that they want to be rushing into very quickly and needs to be like a three to five-year plan. So they're just beginning the discussion of changing over report cards, how often we set them out. There was a little bit of discussion whether, whether we should change the schedule of time cards, but definitely move towards slowly, standards-based report cards. Does that seem fair, Mike? And Mary?
Yes.
I'd add one thing too, is there was a lot of talk and communication about our website and I've been working with Jerry. Jerry's working on redoing our website to try to get that so that it's a little more friendlier to use and we've got a little better way of communicating the events and all that stuff. So Jerry's in the process of starting on something like that. Well, if we have something to bring forward, you're pretty soon.
With a strategic plan in the works, there was also discussion about maybe not setting dates for the next meeting because out of the strategic planning process will come a bunch of committee work and Mike was worried about overcommitting everybody. So we did not set a next date and wait till we, we do some work on strategic planning.
Committees and forming more committees, working on some of these things probably will result from strategic planning. So kind of freeing that up a little bit so people got room to do work on the strategic plan will be important for us.
Thank you. Moving on to the inside of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Whoa.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Go on to the unfinished business. Approval of the 2015-16 budget. Now you can, yeah, now.
To continue on with that one, the big one. After, the front page, I provided each individual fund going after that.
Julie, are you speaking of the summary page?
This one and then the forms behind it.
Gotcha.
The forms behind it, I break down each individual fund. Education fund, I just do the revenue and just do expenditures as a whole at the bottom. And I just want to make sure that you guys understand the estimated fund balances that are all put in here at the beginning, July 1st, 2015, are probably going to change when we, after we have a final audit. So these ones, the ones I used in the beginning, they're what we kind of thought we were going with as, as we, the thing found, things are looking like they're gonna change a little bit. But as far as the total money that we have, it's gonna be saying it's just how the money is ending up in the funds. So I have all the funds listed in here after the education, all the revenue and the expenses are listed individually for you to examine more closely. And as far as the education, there's a line item, line by line is attached in the very back. And what I wanted to do was go through the changes from the tentative budget that I provided to you last month. And there's a thing in here, there's a little copy here that says FY 2016, oops, it should say 16 budget changes. And the first one on the revenue is state aid loss limit grant. I did not have that one on the first one because it just came up on first that we were going to be getting in this and how much money we're getting. So we're getting $106,0512. This is a new one that they have come up with because of the changes in state aid. And the general state aid, I, there's talk in the state that they could be cutting one to two payments. I was conservative and so I did cut back one payment off of this, considering that's what they're talking about, taking away one of our two payments. And also moving back that the O&amp;M fund is so underfunded that I took two payments of general state aid included in there of $530,865. I'm not sure why they didn't levy last December, why they didn't levy enough in the O&amp;M fund to, usually you levy enough in the O&amp;M fund to equal out the expenses that are, that normally happen in the O&amp;M fund and this one was not. And so the levy was last November. And what I'll do this November is when I put the levy together, I will try to put enough levy in there because it's underfunded, put enough in there to cover the expenses for next year plus cover the underfunded that it is right now. So there's gonna be a lot more put in the O&amp;M fund, the levy for the FY 17 school year than there has been this year. And a couple of the other ones, Orphan Engine Extraordinary, just some new updates from ISB that they posted, so I wanted to meet those changes. And the E-Rate fund, after I had talked with Jerry about the E-Rate, things are a little different. When the stuff that he gave me, he just gave me the difference of what E-Rate covers versus the expense. And so I had to make some changes I get. As far as like the wireless, it's $100,000 a year and E-Rate pays 80% of that, but only budgeted the 20% that he showed me, not knowing that that's how we did. But I like to show the expense plus show the revenue as well. Into the O&amp;M fund, there you'll see that I put the $530,000 in there and additional E-Rate funds that were coming. And also, the first time I showed this to you, I thought that they had the sales tax money in the O&amp;M fund, but closer look, it is, has been in the sales tax. The sales tax money has been in the capital projects fund, so I wanted to make sure to show it in there as well. Going down into, the other ones are just little things. I just have to, you have to have some $35,000 of your corporate fiscal property tax in the IMRF fund, so I'll show it there. We go down to education, on the expenses, the items that I adjusted were just $15,000 for homebound online services that I had left off. On the next, top of the next page, there was just a thousand for other expenses, but then I had $50,000 for a special education teacher that I had found out that they had a teacher that was working in second time, in a contract service, but not on the teacher's salary schedule. And so that has been changed and she's going to be hired as a salary teacher. And the same with non-certified, that I still had more non-certified salaries to put into There was an additional $25,000 for high school professional services. I guess Kara had brought to my attention that she had a $10,000 bill from 2015 and a $15,000 bill this year for some athletic training that I wasn't aware of, so I made sure that that's not in the budget. And just a couple of changes for the bilingual library tech, for bilingual library, I had purposes not on insurance, it should have been on insurance. And the technology, I had included new computers in the budget if the board approved them. If the board doesn't approve them, then we'll just be under budget on that. So I just wanted to put it in there just in case.
Is that with tonight's request? That's built into that?
Yes.
Okay.
The rest of these are just a little few things here and there, not to really talk about. The O&amp;M fund, the big one there was the cost of the cameras that they installed last summer. Not aware of that. I wanted to get that in. And just some, Jim had updated me on some improvements that were being done, some roof repairs, it was storm that just happened, so I wanted to get some more money in there to cover that. Transportation fund, one of the things that I, several you've talked about is the transportation funding, how different it is from this year versus last year. And what I had done is I went back and I looked at the transportation from 2000, the report that was filed in 2014, the FY report in 13, and the one reported for this school year. And 2013, the report, there was $289,000 in regular transportation and $196,000 in special ed transportation. And that was for 2013. In 2014, the report was $214,000 in regular and $152,000 in special education, which is a significant difference. It's like $75,000 for regular ed and $45,000 for special ed less. I don't think your expenses went down in 2000, from 2013 to 2014, so I'm not sure, you know, how that happened since I wasn't here. But when I did the report for this year and going by what the data that was in SUNAR, I came up with $546,000 in expenses, reversible expenses for regular ed and $268,000 for special ed. And that's, that is quite a significant difference. So I mean, even when you look at the budget, there's a million dollars that is spent in O&amp;M fund every year. And so I'm just not sure why the other two years are so much lower, but we will be getting audited on last year's transportation report. So I am sure, once they come and audit this, that more light will shine on what's going on in that past year. And we'll also, you know, I'll have them take a look at this year's as well, the one I've done while he's here, until we can shed some light on what's going on with the transportation fund. So I just wanted to bring that one up. And the other one, the only other thing that was significant change in this plan was life safety. I added additional funds to cover the cost of the tenure life safety. Anybody have a question? Well, one thing I did want to say is that the tax levies, I'm not sure what we did in Rockton. We used to hold the tax levy money until July 1st, so we received all of our tax levy in the same fiscal year that it was supposed to be. And I mean, we just called the county and they held the money, gave it to us on July 1st, so we didn't even receive it before that. But I did look back and on the PMA accounts that I just had showed you that they're budgeted up through August 5th, you guys did receive the early payments for FY 16 on May 28th and again, another one on June 4th. So you had received more than half of your taxes in FY 14, or FY 15. And so I did go ahead and budget half of them this year, the other half this year, plus early tax money again for next year. But that might be something that you want to talk about if you really want to have your taxes come in early or if you want them held back in July. So you get all your tax, tax levy money in the same fiscal year, operating fiscal year. If we do that, we probably have to amend the budget.
I got a few questions. This document here with some title, budget changes. Look at the head fund expenses. Then the trouble understanding column on the right-hand side compared to left-hand side. Every single one is higher.
Right.
And that you have a $600,000 less total. What, I'm gonna, what's going on there?
Well, no, on the, it's the proposed budget for one of the proposed, and this is the new one. And...
On the left-hand column?
Oh.
Does it say 12,00603 on your copy? Does it say twelve million, six oh three on your copy?
It did increase the expenses. It increased. Yeah, I see what you mean. I used the thought to add it up. It should be more, because the increase of the expenses was twelve thousand and forty-eight.
Is the increase in the comment section right there where it's saying it's an increase of about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
Yeah. Well, I added the two together. I will add, I can add that up and get back with all of you guys on what the total is. Because I just used Excel to add all those, but it should be more on the right. It could be a typo on my part there. But I would get back to you on that. But the totals on the bottom may not be right, but the figures going across for each line item are correct.
Which figure was used in the budget we're about to approve?
Pardon me?
Which figure?
The ones in the right-hand column are the ones that are in the budget for each line item.
See what, this big document, which you have titled Estimated Fund Balance. I don't know, the pages aren't numbered. It's about the fourth page in on Transportation Fund. That's about a four hundred thousand dollar increase in the tax levy. One million and twenty thousand.
That's what was levied last November.
When was the May and June wire transfers for our local revenue posted in our business system? Is it posted in last fiscal year?
The May and the June, the tax money?
You took a really tax money.
The tax money, yeah.
They were let, they were wired directly to PMA. And one on May twenty-eighth, like I said, and one on June fourth.
So they're posted in last year's general ledger?
The early tax money, correct.
And so, there's another document, I gotta find it.
The PMA one, you'll see, you can go right to the transportation.
But that doesn't tell me what was posted in our general ledger, does it?
In the general ledger for last year.
When you, when you turn to, I don't know which pages you've got here. No, hopefully there's some page numbers. This document here, I'm on the one that says O and M on it down the bottom. Revenue report. You have current year levy, prior year levy, and all the funds. What are you considering to be current year levy?
Current year levy?
Current calendar year?
No, current in, in, on the county, current year levy means that you received the fund in the fiscal year that you levied. So we levied last November, in F, November of two thousand and fourteen, November, probably did it in December.
See, December, yeah.
Yeah, it's shortened November and you levy in December. And December two thousand and fourteen, if you levied it and you received some in the same fiscal year, they call that current year levy. And then it's first prior year levy is if you receive it in the following year that, the next fiscal year, which are actually supposed to be for that year.
So if I'm understanding you right then, this current year levy is three ninety-five hundred thousand, for example, in the operation maintenance. Are you on that page?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, they're not numbered.
Three ninety-five hundred, yeah.
Is that the amount we just received during September?
In September? No, that's the amount that you received in May, in June of two thousand and fifteen.
Sorry, are you switching it from a cash basis to an accrual basis on this budget?
No.
Wasn't this a budget for fifteen, sixteen, from July one to June thirtieth?
Correct, but you received the money in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
I don't believe so, you just told me we got it in May. You just told me we got it in June. That's fiscal year.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Right, you received it last year in two thousand and fifteen.
July one starts twenty sixteen.
Well, isn't this a fifteen, sixteen budget? Isn't this supposed to be a budget from July first? So why would that money be shown in this budget?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll restate through on this. That's not, that's the money that I believe will come in next year. Just, and I copied it like it was for next year. I'm suspecting early tax money again, like you have been getting.
We've been consistent on that. So the first prior year levy, the second number down, five sixty-two, five hundred?
Is gonna be what is remaining to get from you from the levy two thousand and fourteen December. And then I'm...
Now, hold on, let me ask you a question. That's not the money we just received here in September? And we just received in the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, that's part of it, not the whole.
Kind of triples in, but, so it's pretty close to that, that we received here in September?
What you're supposed to receive.
The, you actually have, you don't have a copy of the ISB, the actual budget form that we're supposed to approve?
I had it online, but with Sun Guard. It is, Sun Guard is still having problems with their technical of getting that posted to the Illinois, the Illinois farm, and it's not quoting all of the items of the budget, particularly the levy at this point. And plus the cash balances forward that have to go on that form, I don't have yet. So that's why I didn't want to put it out until October fifteen.
So the, in the, in the transportation fund, let's go back to that, the one million and twenty thousand, that was actually what was on the levy in December of two thousand and fourteen that we planned?
Transportation.
Maybe we could pull that up, it's probably in a board document, you can look at it online.
Well, I have it right there.
Oh.
Could you like me?
Sure, could you bring it up?
Transportation. I do have that one wrong. Seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for transportation. Now, you had six hundred and two. I would have forgotten that. Oh, I'm sorry, I take that, that was the amount collected. That was just the amount collected this time. Here's the budget. Transportation, one million, twenty thousand dollars.
Was levy?
That was levy, yes.
And you collected how much?
In transportation. The original levy request was one million, fifty thousand for, but it, when you guys made your adjustments, it went down to one million, twenty thousand.
You made your adjustments?
Would you like to see it?
Sure. Okay, so, I don't care if I can have a copy of this, but, every request, where was?
That's the adjustments.
Okay. And so, did you use these, this column, in all the, all the budgets?
I used these.
Oh, you used these?
Yes, those were after the adjustments.
So that million, twenty thousand, part of that is actually in fourteen, fifteen?
Right.
Fiscal year.
Right, so what I suspected, we're gonna get six hundred and two the rest of this fiscal year. So I figured that's what they were levying. I'm gonna levy early tax money for next year, if that was gonna come in. We can amend it, if you guys so choose to have, not have early tax money come in, or if we levy it and we're saying we're levying too much in there, we can always adjust it. And again, well, you could amend the budget for that. We need to go through and decide what we're gonna levy in the funds.
Right, well, I don't think the board usually participates in the actual breakdown after we levy. A lot of times, the county will just call the administration and they'll break down the funds.
Right, I mean, that's what we did in Rockton as well. But I brought that to the board in November, the levy, because I get that early, I bring that to the board in November. And the board decides, like, so this is what you've done in the past. This is what I, my recommend, recommendation would be. And then you also have a decision, do you want to go with this or what?
You did balloon, you did a balloon levy in, in Rockton?
A balloon levy.
Did balloon your levy, right?
Yes, yeah, oh, obviously, we did more, wondering if we're gonna get capital improvements and stuff.
Well, you always, you don't want to leave any on the table, so balloon levy is not unusual. And then once the county actually calculates out the exact amount, then you're allowed to move that a little bit, arrange it among the funds.
Right.
Did your board do that? Did your board move that among the funds, or was that done administratively?
No, we did that by administration. When we did the original levy, when I brought it to their attention in November, that's when they decide, well, maybe we don't want that much fund. And they can make decisions. Usually they took my recommendation, but not in the twenty-eight years. They did make some changes to that. And in December, when we had the hearing, that's when we brought what was gonna happen. And then when they adjusted it down, we made adjustments in the administration box.
So what, what document is the board actually voting on this evening?
The proposed budget for one, that says that you will have a six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirteen.
Thinking about this document, this is projected, is this one you picked up?
Right, those are just the overall estimates. And the actual, each individual, line nine by line nine, just behind there.
With Sun Guard's technical issues, putting it into the actual document that the state requires us to, did they give you an ETA of when that's gonna be fixed?
They said that it was done, and I looked at it, and hadn't done all of the time. They had not tied any of the levies. And I had not gotten the opportunity to make sure. I just noticed that right off the bat, they didn't do the levies because we didn't have as much money in there. And I, before I put it together and show it to you, I wanted to cause time to make sure that all of them were right.
So you expect a couple of days, or it's?
Well, it doesn't have to be in the ISB till October fifteenth.
I understand that, yeah.
And so that also gives us time to make sure the fund balances, the fund balances from FY two thousand and fifteen have to be on that document as well.
I'd like to move to approve the tentative budget as projected as presented.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion that we move three hundred thousand from transportation revenue to operation and maintenance fund revenue.
To transportation, if you want to up one.
Evidently, when the levy was broken down last year, far more was put into that, if she's gone by that levy, rather than what may be actual. It'd be better to move that funding, the local funding, from the transportation fund into the O and M fund. As you can see, your O and M fund is not balancing. And you're way over budgeted in transportation.
Hold a second. Motion, a second.
Julia, what are your thoughts on that? You're the expert in the room, so.
I'm just going to ask, are you proposing to transfer the part of the fund balance? Because you've already levied that money, and I can't move the other revenue that's coming in that's for transportation only?
Portion of the revenue that you're counting on here hasn't been levied yet. We don't levy that till December, and we received that in May.
Okay, would you like me to mean the current year?
A portion of that, you'd have to move, when it gets, when it comes time to a portion of, not the levy, not at the levy, but when it comes time to a portion of, a portion, a large amount into the, into the O and M, and that into the transportation fund.
Would you like me to make that change in the current levy? I mean, the current budget, to make the change in the budget?
Yeah, so one million, twenty thousand would be seven hundred, twenty thousand.
Okay, I can do that.
And then O and M goes up an equal amount, let on what it's saying. What's your local taxes are?
Does that help our O and M fund for the year, Julia?
I will rewrite this and get it out there, we got the levy file, yes.
With the amendment?
Yeah.
Does that provide us better flexibility for the O and M, being it's so short?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Yeah, how do we do this here? Do we have to strike down the First Amendment as proposed? Vote on that?
I think we just vote on the amendment, though.
Vote on the amendment, but then if it passes on the amended main motion. If it doesn't pass, then you vote on the main motion as it was presented.
Thank you. So we'll vote on the amendment.
All right, does anyone understand? No, we're waiting here.
We're waiting here, we're gonna move three hundred thousand dollars as proposed. Amendment to your motion is, move three hundred thousand dollars from the transportation budget to the O and M budget to have a short form.
So we have to vote on the amendment first, then the regular motion?
Correct.
If the amendment passes, we don't vote on the ritual motion.
Do we?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's amended, you vote in for amended.
Yeah.
Can I just verify, make sure that I'm thinking it properly? That where it says, current year levy, the building, I'm going to add three hundred and fifty thousand to the current, and then I'm going to do the O and M, and then I'm gonna subtract on four hundred and eighteen thousand of the current in transportation, subtract three hundred and fifty out of that.
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
Oh, was it three hundred?
Three hundred.
And that will be in this particular budget, I will adjust it and make sure it's done. How you want it that, Mr. Wood?
That's my amendment to the main motion, was to move three hundred thousand from the local. In the future, could you put page numbers on things you hand out to the board?
Sure.
Thank you.
The local revenue, transportation local revenue.
Yeah, whatever page it might be on. Put it into the O and M local revenue.
Okay. To the O and M local revenue.
And that can be made during the. Adjustment, when the administration adjusts.
Is it clear to everyone now? On the amendment? Yep.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
All right, now we need to vote on the amended main motion. Is that clear to everyone now? Is that amendment made to it? Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
I'm a little hesitant, because we don't actually have the budget, we're being asked to pass it and sign it, and it gets filled in later. I'm gonna vote no, just based on that.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Nothing further to add at this point, right now?
Okay. Move on to new business.
What's that? No, yeah, we can move on, there's nothing to add or nothing to vote on.
And the approval of the September two thousand and fifteen bills?
I moved that we paid the September two thousand and fifteen bills.
Second.
We'll call.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
abstain.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahal?
Yes.
All right. B, purchase of new bus cameras?
Yeah, we put in your packet a request to purchase thirteen cameras to equip the rest of our buses. They're very helpful for safety and for discipline, especially with some of our crowded buses, and this would then take care, so that all of our buses have an equipped camera on it.
I got a question, since this is not for all the buses, is this the same camera that's in the other buses? Do we know, or are they different?
You know, I think, I'm assuming they're the same camera.
I understand.
Is it the exact same camera that's on the other one? They're a better quality camera. Thank you.
How many buses do we currently have with cameras in them?
I thought they were, yeah, I thought they were close even, close to thirty, twenty-seven, I'm not positive on that.
It's thirteen in total, but all the buses.
Will take care of the rest of them. Of our ones that are in use every day.
Let's give us, sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, let's give us the ability to move these ones around, ones that we need them on the most. Yeah, because we said this is a better camera, so if we have a problem bus road.
Oh, yeah, the older ones, we'll put them on probably the less disruptive buses.
Just wondering, as a matter of protocol, does, is this just coming from our transportation director, or is this generally come through some sort of committee for discussion beforehand, it gets to us?
This has really come from the transportation department to Julia, for transportation director.
All right.
As a request from them.
Okay.
The approximate cost is about eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. They're about fourteen hundred apiece.
Julia, we had a bit of discussion about this, it must have been at Business Services, and the idea that really these will just catch behavior that has already happened, and it's really sort of a not preventative measure, is there any way we can?
Some, it could be.
Yeah, I guess psychologically it could be a bit preventative.
For the bus drivers as well, because if they say something happened in the childhood home, and if this happened, I mean, it's, you know, just, you know, just safety for the bus drivers. At this point right now, with no, no camera, it's, bus drivers are against, were against the children.
Right. Do we have any protocol for, I'm just trying to think of preventative, is there, not training for the kids, but are there expectations that are clearly made? And are the bus drivers trained in behavior and driving while behavior management? Because I know I can't even handle a minivan sometimes, so.
There are management things that bus drivers can use too.
Okay, and we're addressing that preventative section of this while we also work on the camera?
They go through training, you know, there, apparently, there's a trainer on staff to train the new bus, the bus driver. I probably could speak more to that than I could.
Yeah, I mean, I already addressed this with Mike, one of the concerns I have is just buying cameras and thinking that the behaviors are gonna change, we know that doesn't work. I asked Mike if we approved this, that he would commit to the significant amount of professional development. There's no training for bus drivers in the process of getting their license, as far as managing student behaviors behind them. That's something that has to be ongoing, it's something the district has to drive. All of the training is driven by getting a, like, to get, for them to get a CDL. And so, the professional development piece, the student management piece, is something that's district-driven, and it has to be ongoing. Mike was committed to making sure that that happens, if we approve this going forward.
Yeah, seems reasonable.
Motion to purchase the bus cameras.
So move this on with a caveat that the professional development is tied to the motion.
A second, Dan.
It is a piece to it.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be, too. It's a, it's almost like a management thing, that the drivers, it's a skill that they need to learn to.
All right, we have motion, a second, any discussion?
Can you hear the motion, please? Total's eighteen thousand, four seven, approximately.
Yes. That doesn't include professional development, that's cameras in them.
I don't know exactly where I meant it, not even the number.
Eighteen, two seventy-eight. All right, we'll call.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I haven't seen it first, sub notebooks?
Uh, yes, I put something in your packet regarding the purchase of another fourteen hundred sub notebooks. I made calls to each of you today.
Hundred and forty.
What's that?
Hundred and forty.
What'd they say? Oh, did I say, no, hundred and forty? And I'm already retracting that, too, so. I was under the original impression that the notebooks that you guys agreed to purchase this summer was to be directed and distributed to the elementary buildings. However, when I had some further questioning on it, I went back and I looked at the board minutes. The idea that you guys approved them in July was for those notebooks to help with the devices at seventh grade, and then us redistribute our devices across the district. You also approved at that time sixty notebooks to go to the high school. There was a little bit of miscommunication that went on after the approval of that. I was under the impression that we had an extra shipment, which we kinda did. It was communicated to Jerry that the sixty notebooks was approved for the high school to Jerry, and Jerry put a PO in to Dell. Dell sent us two hundred, and the reason they sent them, sent us two hundred was because when we were giving you quotes for that meeting walking in, we were quoting two hundred, the one forty plus the sixty. So, in the meantime, Dell has sent us that, Jerry had been in contact with them, saying we only ordered sixty. Can you come and get these, can you come and get these? I was under the impression that we needed more for the seventh grade. Like I said, there was a lot of miscommunication here. And see if Dell couldn't negotiate those prices a little lower. In the meantime, we never sent a PO for the other hundred and forty. So Dell, in the meantime, has lowered the price to two ninety-nine. We have to still add RAM, which we anticipated to do it, and I think overall, we're about a twenty dollars cheaper than what, just based on that little snafu, we're about twenty dollars cheaper than what you approved in July, July twenty-eighth. I'm retracting, I do not need a hundred and forty more, we, we're gonna keep with what you approved, but that will outfit, it'll take care of seventh grade devices, it'll take care of sixty more at the high schools, plus we'll move two more, is there two or is there three at the middle school? Back up to the high school, high school have four sets. Middle school have four sets, that gives us about twenty extra notebooks to move around. The piece we don't have right now is extra devices going to elementary buildings. But in the meantime, what we'll need to do is kind of step back and look at what we have at the elementary building, and then bring a plan in place to the, to the board to say, how do we go about refreshing, or how do we go about revising our current notebook, our current technology, in a plan that makes sense, so that we're not spending tons of money all at once. Does that make sense? So I'm retracting it, I do not have anything that I'm, I'm asking for purchase at this time.
Okay.
So, right now, today in the classroom, do all the seventh graders have notebooks now?
They're sharing two of the high school carts, plus thirty of our ones that were shipped.
Seventh grade, they didn't get the hundred and forty yet?
Not yet, no, we've got RAM still coming, some extra memory. Right now, they're operating really slow, because they didn't come with enough memory.
So when do we expect them to be in the classroom?
Hopefully soon, when should the memory be in?
Hopefully, by, well, deployed by mid next week.
Mid next week.
And then the eighth grade is using the older ACES?
ACES tablets.
Tablets? And then the devices that the eighth graders, that became freshmen, those devices are what?
They're sitting there.
We sold a few of them, and then the rest were sitting in our office, and we've been using them for parts.
Okay. So.
I think there's about seventy of them.
Them, them, or the eighth grade schools?
I don't want to push those down, no. The, the first generation ACES tablets, no.
So what you're saying is they're not really worth pushing down to anybody?
I thought this morning was.
Right, they're really not the quality or the function, okay.
Based on our discussion this morning, the worry was, is we'll have more problems with them than, than we will with actual productivity for the classroom.
So. Devices used today in class for seventh grade?
Yes.
Are what?
Windows, those sub notebooks.
Dell thirty-one fifty, Windows notebooks.
All hundred and thirty, forty students are using those?
Well, we have, we're borrowing some from the high school, but they're the same Windows, uh, device.
Okay, and then so, maybe next week, those go back to the high school?
They'll all go back to the high school, everything goes. The high school have four carts.
And a cart is sixty?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Total of a hundred and twenty.
Shouldn't there be more than that?
Well, that's the piece, I mean, we do need to grow our devices.
No, I mean, if it's got, how many in seventh grade, and then they're going up there, and you just bought another sixty?
What do we have in seventh grade, what are we, a hundred and sixteen, a hundred and eighteen?
All that, so, so that, that's a hundred and eighty, isn't it?
The sixty are in, in the count of the board cows already. The sixty that they're referring to, that revolve to the high school, are already in that count.
The high school has one cow right now of thirty. Middle school's borrowing their other three cows, which would be another ninety.
Last year, we had two cows. Sorry, it sounds like an English class. Last year, we had two cows. So, the board approved for sixty more. Computers, to be, two more cows. Making it a total of four. Now, at one point in time, to help out with the one-to-one initiative, you know, in seventh grade, so that they wouldn't be lagging in that, because they've built a lot of equipment around that, they took the four cows from the high, or from the high school, and they took them to the middle school. And we just ended up having MAPS testing, the high school got two of those cows back, so we could get our MAPS testing done. After MAPS testing, they took one cow back, so now the middle school has three of our cows, the high school has one cow. Next week, we will have the three cows back, so we'll have four total.
It sounds like we're walking cows back and forth between the businesses. It'd be nice to grow our computers.
So, the, the sixty that were approved by high school are those that are, you know, two of those cows that we're talking about, that have been kind of transported back and forth. With the hundred and forty additional devices in the seventh grade, will that come to an end?
Yeah, yeah.
Jerry, when they were ordered, were they ordered knowing that they wouldn't have enough RAM? And that RAM was gonna be an extra bit that we would be adding, or?
Or something that we learned later?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Let me go, we'll move out the ten-year life safety survey?
Um, yes, Ed, and, or, excuse me, Tom, talked a little bit about that. One of the things that I did bring forward at the last facilities meetings was, is we have all six of our buildings that are up and due for our life safety surveys. Life safety survey needs to be done by law every ten years. It's where an architect comes through and really does a massive comb through of the electrical, the structural, the architectural, needs of the building, anything that might need to be updated because of code. We have all six of our buildings that need to have that done this year. And then what we do is we work with the architects to put a plan in place. And they will usually have a plan in place of items that are urgent, meaning you have a year to fix, items that are required, which could be five to ten years to get done. And then they'll also provide you with another list of recommendations that need to be in, that could, that the board could consider for your plan to bring your facilities into compliance under the life safety survey. I was told, directed by the committee to get bids. I chose to go with Cashman, Stoller, and Wold, because both are familiar and have plans of our two, or of our, all of our buildings. And I provided you with two bids to, for your approval, or for, to approve one, to move forward with our life safety survey. And Cashman-Stoller's bid came in at twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Wold's bill, bill came in at nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Mr. Novak made a call back to each one, letting him know that this is the complete life safety survey, which includes us filing things on state with the Iowa system through the state of Illinois ISB. So, both are completely aware of it, the bids are, the bids are different, but at this point, I guess I would turn it over to the board for discussion and approval of an architect.
I have a question on the, maybe you don't know, on the Cashman. Bid? I see you're, where they reference the twenty-eight, five. Then they talk about a safety reference plan, which is eleven thousand, five twenty, what is that?
I'm assuming that that. I'm assuming that that from them is the, the plan, the safety reference plan, that they file with ISBE from their findings, and then goes back to what they're saying is urgent, required, and recommend, recommended that they, they help file with you for ISBE.
Now, we don't need that with Wold, or?
No, we do. Both, both, uh, both are committed in there. Uh, they must've just broke it out a little different. So, but Wold is very aware of that, that that's part of their job, too.
So does that make Cashman's actual bid forty thousand twenty dollars, adding the twenty-five?
No, the total, I believe, was twenty-five. Any other questions?
I'd like to move for us to take Wold's bid at nineteen thousand one hundred.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Ed, maybe for the sake of the audience, would you explain why you felt we should go with Wold?
Ten thousand dollar savings. We're getting the confirmation of work from both organizations. Both organizations have our prints. We're still not gonna be under contract to them for anything other than the work that's established for the life safety going forward. We're not entering into a contractual agreement with either one. It just makes sense to be as prudent with the money, uh, district's money. Going forward, we might need that ten thousand dollars, need something fixed.
Dr. Greenly?
Yeah.
Is any concern that Wold may not be as diligent and strict on the buildings that they helped complete?
Not from my standpoint. I don't have concerns. I mean, we've worked with Wold in the past, and I, I've been, I've liked the work that they've done. I, I have not heard that as a complaint. Maybe the board has something different, but.
So you don't think-
I don't have concerns, no.
Less critical about their own work?
What's that?
I mean, you don't have any concern that they'll be less critical about their own work?
Not at this point, no. I, I think they'll, they'll have a good understanding of our buildings, and I, knowing Roger, uh, and then Dan Kittrick, the, the people we've been working with, they seem very credible to work with.
The life safety standards are set by the state, not by the individual architecture firm, so they have a, a certain standard that the state would be upholding, not necessarily an organization.
Yeah.
Did, uh, Mr. Novak have a feeling on that?
He's, uh, his comment was, he is in, he's, it's been easy to work with both. So, there wasn't one. And I have not worked with Cashman-Staller, also I can't speak to them, but his comment to me was, he's worked with both, and he could continue to work with either one. There, so there wasn't a strong preference from Jim.
Any further discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Maxi?
Yes.
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 All right, well, I have a review of the board workshop.
Uh, I just put it on there. Um, I was asked by, uh, another board member to put it on there, just kind of as a review. Um, for me, it was very good. Uh, it, it was the Starting Right workshop that we did, creating the new board governance team. For me, it was only my second day, third day, actually, September third. Um, when we did it, it was very good for me. It kinda gave me an idea of what was expected from the board. Uh, my role, your roles, the expectations, it kinda gave me something to, to work from. So, um, I just thought it would be good for us to maybe share if there was anything we grabbed from it from the audience. And, uh, like I said, it was very beneficial for me, and, uh, I, I was asked to put it on the agenda as an item, and I thought it was good to put that.
Okay, it's a great learning tool for, for, for me as well.
We came out of it with a few objectives that Ms. Martinez sent to us. And then, of course, I think the plan is that we'll continue to work on those. But, um, in particular, that last exercise we did, where, you know, as a new board with a new superintendent, kind of starting all over, there were all those little statements that we can redesign. The board will do things this way, and the superintendent will do things this way, and the board will address, you know, issues this way. And I'd really like us to especially hit that last worksheet that we kinda began but never really finished.
We ran short of-
Letting out our expectations of each other, so that we, you know, we have the opportunity to rewrite those and rethink those. Uh, I thought that was the best part of it, was really making it perfectly clear, you know, how do we get something put on the agenda? Just for example, you know, there's still a few of us that are like, we're not really sure how we go about that.
Yeah, we ran short of a little time, but there were some good discussion items for-
It was a very good understanding, very good.
I don't have that sheet we want to, I have it on the train, or should we put it on the agenda and actually just bring those sheets and do it?
I'll, I'll find out how many were left, and we'll decide how bulky they were, and maybe we'll just, if there's too many, we can just hit a few at each meeting and agree that it's gonna be these bullets. And if they're not too many, maybe we can hammer it out kind of everybody.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't know. All right, we'll move on to the strategic plan.
All right, that's me, and I have been speaking about it, talking about it for months, it seems like. And, uh, what I'd like to do tonight is, um, bring to you a proposal. Uh, Lynell Munson-Laswell is her name. I worked with her in Rockton. She does a very good job of facility, facilitating strategic plan. She's very reasonable. Um, we had a strategic plan, and it kinda went through the month, or through the year of twenty-fourteen. And I think the strategic plan could be very valuable for the board, for the administration. Kinda brings us all together on the same vision and mission, and the objectives that we kinda wanna pull or move towards. Um, Mrs., uh, Laswell is available to do it. What I'd love to do is to have the board pass it tonight, um, and so that we could begin strategic planning, and I'd invite, um, uh, parents, staff, students, community members, administrators, and some board members to be part of that initial strategic planning meeting. Um, I'd like to get it started in late October, early November. Pick a date and set some, and I've got some available dates for her. Um, and I would ask her to facilitate and begin it. The price for her is about two thousand dollars, but the price would not exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. So, um, like I said, I'm very familiar with Lynell. She does a fabulous job of leading people and bringing them together, uh, for collaborative, for collaborative plans. So that's my, uh, request, and I'll turn it over to the board.
So you're just asking for us to approve this for two thousand to twenty-five hundred?
Two thousand to twenty-five hundred, so that I can move forward with, uh, planning, strategic plan.
Okay.
So layout for us, what, what her, what this will invite?
Really, what we'll do is we'll pick a day, um, and like I said, we'll invite community members, staff members, parents, students, administrators, board members. We pick one day. We take a look at our mission statement, our vision statement. We make sure that that's together. We talk about what's the strengths and the weaknesses of the district, and then from those, those information, we bring data to the, to the, uh, the strategic planning group. They start to pick priorities of what they want the district to build or move forward with. You know, awesome, o- often what you'll see is, uh, they'll pick curriculum, but they'll pick several topics in curriculum. And I could picture, uh, one of our, one of our topics possibly being a one-to-one initiative. You know, where are we at? What do we wanna do? Do we wanna continue moving forward with that? Um, what do we wanna do curricularly? A lot of times, communication comes in, facilities comes in, and even budget and finances sometimes come in. And then they pick little subcategories of, of what they feel is important that the board focus on. From that, then, what they do is they bring it to the board, uh, for, um, basically, not an approval, but a recognition of the work that the group has done. And then what you do is you divide up into subcommittees from there, on the different areas that they've chosen as objectives to work on for the next year. Those subcommittees, then, will bring back, uh, to the strategic planning team their, um, their objectives, a plan, how to achieve those objectives. The strategic plan, planning team then looks over it and says, yes, this is what we had in mind, or no, this isn't what we had in mind. Um, and once the strategic plan could kinda say, yes, everything here is all put together with a long-term plan in mind, they bring it forward to the board, again, not for approval, but for recognition. And the board really, then, is kinda giving a good faith, uh, commitment to the group of people that have done this work to say, um, we will look at this as a plan and try to guide our decision-making in the future. Obviously, budget and, uh, timing always come into it, but it, it's really kind of a good faith effort for, uh, your community of stakeholders in a direction for the school history.
Is she just with us for a day, or does she stay with us for the whole process?
What she'll do is she'll, she'll be with us that day. She'll help us get set up for that day. Um, that's one piece. Then she comes back for the other large strategic planning meeting, um, when the groups get back together. And the other piece of that is, is she trains the, um, whoever the committee leaders will be when they go to work on the subcommittee. So there's some training involved, too, that she oversees. She also, uh, is there, so if you wanna submit plans, sample ideas, or look for recommendations, suggestions through the whole process, she's there for that, those parts, too.
Something done in-house, or we go to someplace like the fire department where there's a bigger room to accommodate a big group?
Typically, what I like to do, and I didn't think of the fire, that was what I was gonna ask, I like to take it off-campus somewhere, where it's kind of a neutral area where people can speak. Uh, the firehouse might be a good idea to do it, but I like to take it off-campus.
Can you send out the invitations to?
I usually work with administration and board on looking for s- good key members for the strategic planning side of things. And then we'll send out invites, and hopefully, that strategic planning team, you're looking for about twenty-five people-
Okay.
-to bring, uh, their thoughts and visions and stuff, and you're, you're looking for key people that are, that'll bring good ideas for the district.
Okay. Kelly, I know at one point in time, we had a huge pile of those strategic plans, and now, you know, you sent us an E-file. Do we have any printed versions anymore that we could mark up without printing off new ones?
Just the simple.
Okay. Okay.
If they're still around, they're probably upstairs in the garage.
We have a lot of boxes of them.
If it, if they, if you happen upon them, I wouldn't mind a physical copy that I can kind of mark up.
Mark up.
Okay, don't worry. I can print it. I just, I'm thinking of saving paper. You don't know me well.
All right, then. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Strategic plan is presented.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's, what is the motion?
The strategic plan is presented, starting two thousand two five.
Approving the spending of the money, you know, approving a strategic plan, aren't we? Right, we're not really approving the strategic plan. We're approving, approving the, begin the process of developing a new-
Strategic planning.
We might need to reword that.
Basically, what we're looking for is to move forward the strategic planning process. Is that correct? Is that the way I want the motion to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that, pretty sure that's what you presented.
That's what I was hoping for.
Okay. Let's clearly have a motion and second. We're in discussion. We'll call.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
This is Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Yes.
Last piece. Then we're looking for a motion for executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony out of complaints lodged against the employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity and collective bargaining, negotiating matters between the public body and its employees for their respective representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classed employees, and the establishment of reserves or settlements of claims as provided in the local governmental and governmental employees toward the Unity Act. If otherwise, the disposition of a claim or potential claim might be pressured for the review or discussions of claims, loss, or mismanagement of national records, data, vice, or communications from, or with respect to any insurer of the public body, or any governmental risk management association, or self-insurance pool of which the public body is a member.
Get on that, Kelly.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and second. We'll call.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
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 Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Are you the motionless? Send no.
Yes.
And Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Okay. Did you guys get enrollment numbers on your page?
Uh, yeah.
I had it in my phone, I just forgot to check.
Move to adjourn to the next session.
Second.
There you go.
On there.
Aye.
All opposed. Back in open session. Any recommendations for executive session?
I make a motion to approve the settlement as presented for employee A-one dash twenty fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
No.
Mr. Allison?
Yes. Anyone have anything to add? All right.
Move to adjourn. Second.
On there.
Aye.
Opposed. Wonderful.